We are on the air.
Great. Calling to order, the meeting of the planning board for Long Hill Township. This is a special meeting hearing on the date of November 12th, 2025 at 7:30. Welcome everyone, and I'm going to turn it over to Madam Secretary to read our announcements.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to get the meeting off shortly. I'll figure that out. Okay, number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting or hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Rule call. Ms. Stil. Mr. Hands.
Here.
Committeeman Lavender.
Present.
Mr. Laverario.
Here.
Ms. Ojens.
Here.
Mr. Al Palca.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Present.
Chairman Richardson.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Before we begin, I just wanted to first acknowledge why we're having this hearing on Wednesday evening was to steer clear of Veterans Day. I think we all owe a huge debt of gratitude to all of the veterans who serve and have served, and it really should be something that we acknowledge every day, but yesterday was Veteran Day, and I just wanted to make that acknowledgement, so.
Hoorah.
Yes, hoorah, thank you.
You're here.
First up was to go over meeting minutes, and we're going to push that. We've kind of gotten backed up, and our secretary has pledged to get these done for our next meeting, which gives us more time for our application. So, maybe the applicant could come forward, and we could commence the application. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, well, not to cut off counsel real quick, just, I'll just point out, as everybody knows what we're looking at here, this is the application of 275-283 Main Avenue, application number 2516P, Grasso Holdings LLC, they're here for minor subdivision approval as well as preliminary and final major site plan approval and variance relief. Another thing I'll point out for the record, I did review their notice, everything was properly cer- everything was properly done, so the board has the jurisdiction to hear and decide the case. With that, I'll throw it over to Ms. Counsel, Mr. Skolnick, to executive.
Thank you, Chairman, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Appreciate it. As you know, I'm representing Grasso Holdings. We're here for minor subdivision approval as well as preliminary and final site plan. For the record, it's block 11511, lots 1, 2, and 3, commonly known as 275-283 Main Avenue. As Ms. Lahaney pointed out, we're in a new, newly titled zone, the SV Sterling Village Zone, formerly the B-15 Business Zone, and our proposal calls for the existing three-family structure that's on the corner of Union Street and Main Avenue to remain. So, we're asking that that building is going to remain, it's going to have its own parking lot, and we're proposing two new structures, each two stories, with ground floor commercial. So, each of those two buildings, ground floor commercial, about 3,200 square feet, on each of the ground floor with 3,000 square feet rentable. So, there's some corridors and some staircases, Mr. Lonza Farm is going to go over that. On the second floor of each of those structures, we're proposing two residential units, each about 1,500 square feet each. So, you've got these two buildings, let's call them 3,200, 3,000, 3,200, and they're going to go up two stories, commercial first floor, residential second floor, we're proposing a new common parking lot with 18 spaces to serve those two mixed-use buildings, no variances with parking, no variances. The subdivision is what I'll call a lot line adjustment, since we have three lots right now, and we're going to end up with three lots, but we're moving the lot lines around a little bit. As I think you're all aware, there's a little bit of a history, because we originally filed the application, and it had some density variances. So, we were over at the Board of Adjustment, in its wisdom, in the last couple of weeks, the town council, the governing body changed that, I'm sure they referred the ordinance over here for your review, so the density variances were removed, those were the only D variances, so therefore, the jurisdiction shifted back, so congratulations.
Yeah, well, lucky you to come before both boards.
Yes, well, we only, we get to do one board, one stop shopping, so we're here, so the governing body said we want the planning board to have the application, or, you know, at least change the ordinance broadly, and our application then shifted because the D variance, the one where the Board of Adjustment has exclusive jurisdiction, has gone away. So, we do have some bulk variances, we'll certainly go through those and the waivers and provide the design rationale. We believe overall they're modest. We have Ms. Lahaney's November 6 letter will address most of those issues in our testimony. We have Mr. Vuich's letter as well. As I mentioned, we have Mike Lonza Farm, I think most of you know him, so he's going to do the civil testimony and the planning, but what I'm going to try to do, because I think it makes sense, we'll put him on for the civil, it's going to touch on the variances, then we'll put our architect on for very, you know, fairly limited, 10, 15 minutes, and then we'll put Mr. Lonza Farma back for the planning, as usually the planner comes last and is sort of bringing everything together, so, Mr. Lonza Farma, we're going to try it, it'll be a little bifurcated. It might not be perfect, he may touch on some variances during the civil side, but we'll, we'll see how that works. My client, Luke Grasso, is here, if you have any questions about operations, or tenants, or things like that, he's available, I'm not intending to call him. One thing, Chairman, signage, we have not proposed any at this time, so there's no variances, we'll have to either live with what's there or come back, but, you know, it's a, it's a project that's in development, we don't have a signage package before you, so, we have the ordinance, we'll comply, or Mr. Grasso, he thinks he can comply, but if he wants to come back and he needs relief, you know, that'll be for some later date, but of course, the review letters asked about that, so I thought I'd raise that up front and sort of take it off the table. So, with that, Chairman, we'll call Mike Lonza Farma, if that's okay?
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, how about, why don't we swear every, get our board professionals, all your witnesses, we'll do everybody at once, save us some time.
We'll swear Mr. Grasso in too, just in case, so this way we got it taken care of. Lou, so you're going to come up, and Lisa, you're going to come up, and we're going to swear everybody in first, this way we have it out of the way.
Excellent, can all five of you raise your right hands for him? If all five of you swear in the testimony you're about to provide, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so what have you got? Great. And, Mr. Skolnick, another question, do you have any exhibits that we're introducing tonight?
Mike, you have some colored exhibits which are not part of, you want to call those out for us sort of all at once at the beginning, Mike?
Yeah.
And just, you know, A1, A2, so Chris can mark those?
Exactly, easier to do at the front.
This way we can try to move along a little bit.
Exactly.
Now, we colorized sheet six, which is the site plan, it's the same drawing that you have in your plan set, however, we put some color to it to help distinguish the elements of the project.
So, that's A1, so that'll be A1, Mike, colorize sheet six?
Colorize site plan, sheet six.
What's, what's the date on that, is it, we're just going to give out today's date?
It is May 12th, 2025.
Okay.
And then we have a colorized version of a landscape plan, which is sheet number nine, and that also has the date of May 12th, 2025.
Great, that'll be exhibit A2.
That'll be A2.
Okay, so just those two?
Just those two.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Okay, Michael, do you have any qualifications where this board could find that you're an expert in engineering and planning? Could you let them know what those qualifications are?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer, thanks very much.
You can sit down, you guys can sit down.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey, I'm a principal with the firm of Henson Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey. I've been licensed as a professional land surveyor and engineer since 1984, and as a professional planner since 1985, hold a bachelor of science degree in civil and environmental engineering, I've testified before numerous boards throughout the state, was your board engineer for a while, and you haven't seen me.
Welcome back.
Chairman, I'd submit Mr. Lonza Farma is an expert in engineering and planning tonight.
Any objections? Thank you.
We were just going to provide him, Mike, and then we can, sorry.
Mike, check, one's mine, mine's working. I think everybody else.
I was afraid to get ours working, because last time I might have.
Of course, we have batteries already, so.
That, yours went on, yours on, mine hasn't come on yet. Jill, hold on, I've got the cordless.
You want to do one?
Sure.
Are we sure? This one's working.
Mr. Lonza Farma, while we're getting the mic situation set up, could you just move the easel back a few feet, and then, members of the public, if you guys want to see the plans, you're welcome to come up and take a look.
These plans aren't secret, so you can come up and view them at any time, you're not disrupting anybody by coming in. I don't think Mike will be intimidated.
You've got to move the chair to the front, is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
He wants to come on. It's okay, Chair.
That's the plan chair.
It's like the one they got in the hotel room.
See that, that's, what I currently have up on the easel is sheet number three in your plan set, which is the existing condition, survey of the property.
Mike, why don't you move that up a little bit?
Aye.
You guys got it, you all got it?
I think everybody.
Okay.
That's the, the plan set, May 12th, 25.
So, as, as Mr. Skolnick pointed out, the property in question is block 11511, lots 1, 2, and 3, they're located on the corner of Union Street, which is on the left side of the exhibit, Main Avenue runs along the bottom of the exhibit, north is to your left, south is to your right. You can see the three lots that currently exist, lot 3, 2, and 1, they are all 50 by 200-foot lots, for a total land area of 30,000 square feet. Surrounding the site is, there's a commercial use immediately to the south, to the east there's a landscape contractor's yard, even though it's in the R4 residential zone, it is a commercial use, there is a single-family residential lot that exists immediately to the southeast. Across Main Avenue, there's a variety of commercial retail spaces with a number of apartments upstairs, and a few single-family and multifamily homes. The property itself is relatively flat, there's a slight grade differential from southwest to northeast, and the property is not obviously impacted by wetlands or steep slopes, however, it is impacted by the flood hazard area of the Casaya River. So, prior to coming to this board, before we even thought about making an application to the municipality, we thought it would be prudent to go to the DEP, so we made an application for the two lots, the two lots that are going to be redeveloped, since the existing structure on lot 3 to the north is not going to be modified, we did not need a permit for that parcel. So, we did secure permits, that will allow the mixed-use type development that we're proposing, along with the surface parking lot that we're proposing at the rear of the property. Currently on the site, there's an existing three-family structure on lot 3, a two-car garage located off of Union Street, there's a gravel parking area that tenants tend to use off of Union Street. On the center lot, lot 2, there's a single two-car garage located pretty far back from Main Avenue, apparently there was a structure there at one time that has been since torn down. There's a series of paved areas around that garage, and there's an existing driveway on lots 1, immediately to the north of the existing 1,600-square-foot commercial building on that parcel, and access to the garage is made from that driveway, so there's an expansive pavement that exists to the east of the existing building. What we are proposing to do is, the first step in the process, is to reconfigure the lots. Turning to sheet 4, which is the minor subdivision plot, what we're proposing to do is take a 40, excuse me, an 80 by 50-foot piece off of the rear of lot 3, and append it to lot 2. So, lot 2 would become an L-shaped parcel, lot 1 would remain unchanged. The lot area that would result, post subdivision for lot 3, would be 6,000 square feet, lot what we've called as proposed lot 2.01 would actually be 14,000 square feet, I think erroneously we had indicated it as 13,350. During the design process, we were playing with the extent that we were going to subdivide it, and we never updated that area, but the proposal is to take a 80 by 50-foot parcel, which is 4,000 square feet, append it to lot 2, gives us 14,000 square feet, and lot 1 would remain unchanged at 10,000 square feet. No variances are required to perfect the subdivision, as part of the subdivision process, and because we're going to be using a common parking area in the rear of lots 2 and 1 and 2, we're going to have a cross-access easement and shared parking agreement, as well as shared utility easements, that would run along the extent of the rear of the properties. So, this all would be perfected by deed, we would prepare the necessary deeds, Mr. Skolnick will report at the county courthouse to perfect the subdivision. Once the subdivision was perfected, the existing structures on the property, the two garages, as well as the commercial building, along Main Avenue at 283 would be demolished to make way for the proposed site plan. Sheet 6 would be marked as A1, has been colorized, and what this shows is the full extent of the development that we are proposing. You can see that the new configuration of lot, what we're calling 2.01, would have access off of Union Street, there would be a single structure that would be located along Main Avenue, it has a front porch area that would be set back approximately six and a half feet from the right-of-way. The building footprint is approximately 44 by 73 feet in size, there are canopies that would cover the front and back porches to give the structure some character, you'll hear from the architect about the aesthetics of the building and how that enhances the design. The buildings are set back three feet from each of the side property lines, that's one of the variances that we're seeking, if you know, under your ordinance, the setback would be zero if it was a commercial use, and it would be 10 feet if it's a residential use. Now, if you notice, the building on lot 1 is adjacent to a commercial use, in a commercial zone, so that setback actually is compliant at three feet. The variance that we are seeking is the separation between the two proposed structures on our own property, as well as the setback for the two buildings, the mixed-use building and the existing three-family. The existing three-family is currently about 3.2 feet off the property line, so that is an existing non-conforming condition that would be continued, and as if you notice, the majority of the building, the mass of the building, is actually towards the back end of the lot, so it really opens space, so it's adequate light area and open space for that structure as well, as the residential units above. On lot 3, there would be a gravel parking area that we would continue, that gravel parking area, measures about 30 by 30, so you can adequately fit three cars in that area, three cars is what's required for the three-family structure.
Mike, I know spaces, Ms. Lahaney asked whether they could be dimensions, we could add the dimensions there to show that they do comply.
Well, I think what she was asking, I mean, the words in your mouth, but I believe what she was asking, is there adequate room for the cars? What they're also requesting is, under the ordinance, there's supposed to be a paved surface with striping, we'd rather leave the existing gravel area as it is, it's been that way for decades, and it works well, in my mind, especially in the floodplain area, why add more impervious surface? If we need a design waiver, I think that we have the appropriate proofs to support that design waiver, and I believe that fact that we're in the floodplain, we'd rather leave gravel rather than paving with striping, for tenants that become accustomed to parking in that area so they know where they should be at any given time.
It's really an existing condition, that can be unchanged, is that a fair characterization?
That is correct.
Mike, Ms. Lahaney pointed out, this issue with the maximum floor area of the building is 3,000, you show our entire building to be 3,200, but that's the footprint, can you just talk about that briefly?
Well, yes, the, the building footprint itself is about 3,200 square feet, 3,212, I think, to be exact, but on that first level, that would be the retail space, there's going to be two staircases, one on either side, that bring you up to the apartments above, so the net floor area that we're going to be left with would be approximately 3,000 square feet.
Okay, so it's sort of our position that we comply, we're very, very close to compliance with the 3,000 square foot limitation, because that's the amount of rentable commercial space?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
So, we were talking about parking, parking for the two buildings, which are identical in size and programmed retail on the first floor, two, two-bedroom apartments above, would, you would have a requirement of approximately 16 spaces for the retail space, and eight cars for the apartments above. However, under your ordinance, you're, being in the Sterling Village area, in close proximity to the train station, you're, you reduce the required parking area by, parking number parking spaces by 50%, so therefore, the required number of parking spaces, we calculate out to be 23, if you include the spaces for the three-family structure as well. What we are proposing is that part of the parking area, 18 parking, surface parking spaces, would be nine by 18 spaces with two-foot overhang, so they're compliant with your ordinance, your ordinance is nine by 19, however, if you have the overhang, you could reduce it down to 18, which is what we've done. We have a single handicap spot located in the rear, and we've also added two EV charging stations at either side of the parking area, so we're allowed to get a credit of one for one with regard to the number, required number of parking spaces, so that brings us down to 21, so the 18 we have in the back, plus the three that we have on the lot 3, brings us to the required, excuse me, lot 1, lot 3, yeah, brings me up to the required number of parking spaces of 21. We also have a sidewalk system, the sidewalk would be 6 feet wide, as required by your ordinance.
Excuse me, what are you talking about, if I might, what are you talking about parking? Can I just double-check something with you?
Yeah, sure.
On the existing building, lot 3, the parking at the back there, how does, can I just make sure the access to that, how is that access to the parking going to be, off the street or through the parking lot?
The, this parking area would be.
No, the green bit, where you, put your mouse back.
Where are we talking?
Existing lot 3.
Existing lot 3.
Existing lot 3.
The back, the parking.
Would be directly off of Union Street.
So, it comes straight off of Union Street, so you're not changing that, that's going to stay as is, gravel?
That's as it is, yes. That's, that's, we're not proposing to change that design concept.
Yes, it's not, it's not clear on your diagram.
Okay.
Because it says parking is, looks more like the green bit.
Well, that, that's actually on this, this green area here, which is grass pavers, that's actually part of lot 2.01.
So, that's a green area?
The darker, the darker green area is actually grass pavers, and elements that, we tried to create an area where if need be, you could, you could put other things in that area, if you had to, I don't know, picnic tables, things of that sort could be placed on that area without getting it problematic.
But it's not intended for parking, don't you?
It's not, it's not part of the parking lot.
Don't you?
It's not intended to be parking either.
Right, because it's not clear from the diagrams, to be honest, at that point.
Decrease the impervious, and so the intent there is to provide a stable surface that is green and reduce the impervious coverage.
Instead of building a patio.
Right, so instead of the, the user of that dwelling then coming back and asking for a patio and putting in a large concrete patio, you have a somewhat improved surface, right, the, the paver systems that you could stand on, you could put structures on, you're going to put a patio table on.
Be like a picnic table or a fire pit or something like that.
Your grill or something like that, rather than being on a soft grass material.
Right, my, my concern there is, that could also be used for a trailer, or other wheeled vehicles that may not be motorized, so someone might want to park a trailer on there, I don't want to see a trailer on there.
Agreed.
If it's green space used for living, for recreational spaces, which are, I think, the intent.
Yes.
That's why I'd like it to stay, I would not want to see people parking trailers on that.
We put a little fence there, like a little, a little lattice fence?
Like on the edge, you're saying on the edge of the parking area to the, to the rear?
Yeah, just something, there's not going to be a curb cut there.
Right, right.
Right, no curb cut, but you want to, but it's next to the gravel.
Yep, yep.
It's next to the gravel lot.
If you look across the way on Union, you can see people parked in the woods there, I know that's private property over there.
Appreciate that.
Right now, it's all flat, you can park anywhere along that.
No, no.
So, it's pretty easy to do.
So, are you going to curb cut it? So, are you going to curb cut it?
Did you quote it?
I can throw this out there, we can make it.
Okay, Mike, Mike, we'll, we'll have a, presumably a break at some point. You got any quick ideas on that, but?
I was just talking to my client about something. Apparently, he was under misconception. He thought that that area was going to be part of this lot.
Mm-hmm.
It's not.
So that's going to be part of the new lot, or the added L shape?
For the apartments.
It's part of the new lot.
Two Point Oh One. Correct. I was going to suggest if the board's amenable, if the applicant's amenable condition, just stating that no parking would be permitted on that grass paver area of vehicles or trailers of any sort. I'd leave that to zoning to enforce that.
Yeah, that carries out the intent.
Right, yep, exactly.
Right.
Thank you.
That's basically the, the outdoor patio space for the apartments above.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So if I can continue for a second, then, while we're talking about it. So what's the curb line on the, on the prop, on Lot Three? What's the curb against Union? Right now, there's no curb, right? There's no path, there's no sidewalk.
No, there's a curb.
There's a curb. About halfway up.
Not much of a curb.
This is the curb return into the main apartment.
No, 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 right.
I think, what's existing?
What's existing and what are you proposing, what's the difference?
Let's go back to the survey then.
Because right now, there's not, not much of a curb.
Right, along, all along here, this is, this is open continuously. Edge of pavement from, from where the garage is all the way down to where the fence is in this whole gravel area is being utilized for parking by the tenants.
Which is fine, so how are you going to change that? Are you going to put some curb in now? I'm thinking partly with that patio area, if you, your intention to leave it uncurb.
We're only going to put curb returns at the, I think they're going to leave this as it currently exists. If you wanted to define it, take this curb.
Well, that's what I was wondering, yes, to be honest.
And extend it down.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to see the curb there.
Just to prevent people from doing exactly what you're saying, so on.
Into that, to that point, then?
Let's see his curb there.
Yeah, take it, take it to the common.
To make it more of a private, personal area as opposed to potential driving, yeah. That'd be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, because that's, going west, you have Belgium Block.
Yeah.
When you go at the end of the gravel, it's Belgium Block in front of that garage and extends down that, into the neighborhood.
Right. The driveway, the parking area could be granite block or concrete, neither one. Doesn't matter, but if the, if the roadway to the west is all granite block, that would make sense.
Mm-hmm, to keep that, right, uniform.
Okay, thank you.
So it's consistent.
But then, but, so then we'll, we'll continue a depressed curb along the existing gravel to the concrete curb?
We weren't going to. I was proposing to terminate the curb at the common, the new boundary line between Two Point Oh One and Two Point Oh One.
Between the two properties. So will that be the only?
The board would be asking me to extend it all the way down to the.
I think, again, to deter what we think might happen with potential parking or something going on there.
And just leave a depressed curb where the gravel parking.
I'm going to go with a point of clarity here.
Yes, because they would have to get in there.
I'm going to go with a point of clarity here. From the corner of Main and Union Street, it is a, it's concrete.
Correct.
All the way down to the gravel, where the gravel lot is. After the gravel lot, you'll have a gravel lot for Lot Three. That'll be cut, because that's going to be, now start the new portion of Lot Two, right? That's where the Belgium Block should go, all the way to where it turns into the parking lot.
What about the opening for the access to the gravel?
I would prefer you go depressed curb so that we hold the road together in the future, and we pave, we mill and we pave to that edge, and we don't influence the gravel.
Just, just clarification, though. There's no concrete curve there, that's timber.
That's timber?
I'm looking at it. It's timber.
Down here.
So I don't know if that's relevant, but.
It is, it is.
But just a curb, that's all. Always.
Oh, if we're talking about something that has to be constructed.
It is timber. It is timber.
Timber is a lot different than a curb, which requires a foundation.
I think we'd get concrete.
So you can still get the depressed concrete where that timber line ends, where that takes it all the way to where the end of, the new end of the gravel.
Right, the new end of the gravel, where then they have the green, the green space, which becomes Lot Two, and that they can turn Belgium Block.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, looking at the Google map, where does the green space begin? Is it, as you head north on Union, is it sort of like halfway up that gravel lot?
You see like there's three lines on that wooden fence?
Yep.
I'm thinking it's that third line where the, where the Jeep and the, and the small four-door.
Yep, yep.
His nose then, I'm thinking that's where the line is.
Okay, and, and if that's supposed to be green space, why is there paving there?
Well, they're calling it green space, it's not solid pavers, because it's allowing grass to grow through. So when I'm using pavers, it's, that's the wrong example, I think.
Isn't the purpose to park on those?
Well, no, it would be like, typically use it as a fire lane around, to circulate around a large building that needs access to the rear or something, or, but it grows through, so you don't see it. And in this scenario, it allows for a, a non, not fully impervious surface to be in the area where you might put a grill, you might put a table.
A recreational space.
Right, as the recreational space, so that you're not, when you're in a flood-throwing area, you may have wet, wet soils in those areas commonly. So not leaving your, you know, your patio equipment out onto wet mud.
So it's being used just parking now, but won't be in the future?
Correct, correct. So, to the board's discretion on the curb limit, I am comfortable with, from the corner, running in past the, the proposed gravel parking for existing Lot Three, remaining edge of curb, noting that there's a railroad tie curb on the, on the road to the, to the point that when we, as the township, do milling and paving on Union, we can have somebody address proper curbing there, and then would provide the depressed curb to match to where they're showing on their plan.
That'd be a future project.
Yeah, the, the curbing that's there unfortunately, great for putting it out, is railroad tie, it's not compliant, it's not really ours, it probably went in with the home, and it's been legacy. We would then address that when we mill and pave the road.
When you say address it, you'd replace?
Yeah, we would set curb.
Put the curb in.
We continue the concrete curb from the corner at Main.
So you're going to replace?
And bring that down, and then we'll go with our own depressed curb across that driveway to hold our roadway together and protect the road we paved. So, so we can come out from that driveway with the curb return and tie in, like you said, at the property line. We, as a township, can address that Lot Three, reconfigure Lot Three.
So you're going to handle the curb?
Yeah, I mean, it would be at a later date when we pave the roads, it'll be on my list with DPW.
And there's some sewer work.
It's defined.
There's some sewer work that has to be done there as well, if you could see that.
Right, right. So we're going to be into that curb anyway with resetting that brake and everything else?
Yep, yep.
But you do want curb around that green space, the proposed paver type?
Yeah, I think, as you were saying, you would, you would bring the curb return down and tie it to, you'd end it at the edge of the property line, which is, which then prevents anybody from going up into that grass paver area off the street.
Thank you.
And then you have the curb in the parking lot that prevents you from jumping in, and then the stipulation for the zoning officer.
Yep, that's good. Thank you for that.
Moving on.
Welcome back.
We have a walkway system that's proposed to bring the individuals that park in that area, residents as well as potential customers to the retail space, up a ramp system that come up to an elevated platform that runs between the buildings to gain access to the, to the front entrance to the buildings. There are several side entry doors as well incorporated into the design. The reason for that is because of the floodplain. As you know, the state of New Jersey has decided to elevate the flood elevation from what it was several years ago. Because we're using a state-adoption study, we had to add two feet. So that required us to elevate the building significantly from the streetscape on Main Avenue. That's why we have these staircases here. But there's flood vents all around the sides and the rear of the building that allow floodwaters to move freely. And there's about a three and a half to four foot crawl space under the building that would accommodate the floodwaters if we would. So that there is zero net fill as a result of the design of the project. So there's still flood storage capacity available on the property. The design calls for a reuse area in the southeast corner of the project. That would be sufficient for recycling as well as trash removal. Truck could pull in, pick up and pull out deliveries. You don't have a dedicated delivery space because the tenant spaces are so small. However, small UPS-type trucks, small delivery vans could easily utilize the parking stalls at the back of the property to make their equip deliveries. Uber, eats, things of that sort can, can use the parking area as well. The, as part of the design concept, we have LED light fixtures proposed around the perimeter of the parking lot. There'll be four fixtures. And then we have a number of fixtures that will illuminate the walkways, and we have some wall-mounted fixtures between the two buildings to illuminate that elevated platform between the two buildings. Our design calls for a one-foot candle maintained average in the design. Your ordinance says that the maintained average for a parking lot is to be point four. We don't feel that that is adequate. Most IES standards are closer to trying to do a maintained average of one. We have done very well with the LED light fixtures in creating a good max-to-minor ratio. In this case, I believe it's about two and a half to one, which is very good, so you don't have any hot spots, and the LED fixtures are dimmable. So after hours, the lighting could be reduced in the parking lot after ten-thirty to fifty percent of what the level would be. But I understand we need a design waiver for that because we do exceed the point four with candle maintained average and the point two maintained average after ten-thirty. So I believe we need a design waiver for that, and in my opinion, that is certainly a safety issue. And I think that having the proper illumination is critical for a use such as this, where you have residents that might be coming home late from work and want to be able to safely negotiate the back parking area and the walkway itself.
Good, can I just ask, double-check Liz, the point four, is that more in commercial areas as opposed to residential use? Would you know that?
I don't, I think point four is probably more in residential, right?
Your, your ordinance says average, point four average, that's unusual. It's usually point four minimum.
Yes.
I, I think the ordinance was erroneous, personally.
I'm supportive of the, the waiver, in that I would, I would agree. Point eight to one is what I'm more comfortable with to provide more of a minimum in a parking area that's then providing direct access to the building, especially in commercial spaces. And then, and then on top of that, so the opportunity then to dim it, as you said, after ten-thirty, about fifty percent, that would bring us down closer to our design standard and our ordinance, which I think we need to reevaluate and address. But it would, it would provide still a factor of, and implement, implement an opportunity for safety for the residents that are coming home after those hours.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So being in that point five range after hours, and then, you know, up comfortably over one as, for an average throughout the parking lot is appropriate earlier than that.
We're, we're obviously in this town very concerned about the night sky, et cetera. Are you going to testify in regards to the type of fixtures that are going to be used?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you, Mike.
Do you mind if I, sorry, to all the questions? The park, while we're on parking, would there be designated parking spots for residents?
Yeah, we, we plan on assigning parking to the residents.
So those ones may be the ones closest to the buildings, I presume? And that's where the lighting may be a bit more sensitive at some, sometime?
Yeah, definitely, we could do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So just wanted to quickly review some of the standards in, in the zone and identify some of the variances that we are seeking. So in the, the new SV Sterling Village Zone, it's really the same basic folk standards as your former P one-five zone. Minimum five thousand square foot lot area, we obviously comply with that, six thousand being the smallest on Lot Three Point Oh One. Fifty-foot minimum width, which we have. Minimum floor area ratio is six hundred and fifty square feet on the ground floor. We have thirty-two hundred. The minimum building width is twenty feet. Our building is going to be forty-four feet wide. The maximum building height is thirty-five feet. We are going to be compliant with that. It's a two-story structure that would not exceed thirty-five feet. Maximum front yard setback of ten feet. We're, we're compliant at the six and a half to the porch. We're actually, we are twelve and a half to the building itself, but to the porch area, we've got six and a half. And the reason for that is the staircase that we need to elevate the building. The minimum side yard, this is where we need a variance. Zero or ten feet is the requirement. We're proposing three feet.
That's really internal to this project.
That's correct.
Right, so to, to the.
Well, the area where, where it's not internal to the project is to the south, where we would be compliant, because this is a commercial use, and the setback could be zero.
Okay, so then, to the extent there's a harm from not complying, it's really to, to our client's buildings.
That's correct.
Itself there. The, the main harm at least would be one that we're imposing on ourselves.
Right.
We should sort, don't sort back the questions. It does back the question, then, why do you not conform if your building's, why can't you build it in the architecture?
After the architect test defies, then I'll be back.
Okay.
Kind of make the justification for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The rear yard setback, the requirement is twenty-five feet, obviously. We will exceed that at about a hundred and fifteen feet. Building coverage. We have thirty-five percent building coverage allowed on the Lot One. We actually need a small variance. The building coverage would be thirty-seven point four percent. And that actually calculates out to only about two hundred and seventy-four square feet. And the reason for that is part of the aesthetics of the building. The canopies that we are proposing as a rear and front of the building cause us to go over, because this lot is ten thousand square feet. They're identical buildings, but this lot is compliant because we have a larger lot area. The lot coverage, the requirement is sixty-five percent. Lot One, it would be non-compliant at sixty-nine percent. Lot Two Point Oh One would be non-compliant at sixty-six point seventy-six percent, and Lot Three Point Oh One would be compliant at sixty-one point eighty-five percent. Now, I'd like to point out, when you, when you average the three lots together, it calculates out to sixty-five percent. And actually, under the difference between the existing impervious areas and gravel areas and the proposed, we're actually twenty-eight hundred square feet less impervious than what exists on the property today. So I believe that's real positive as part of the overall development of the project. Maximum floor area ratio is a hundred percent is permitted. We're clearly less than that, we're compliant. I had maximum residential density, that's no longer a metric within your ordinance, and the buffer requirement of ten feet. According to your ordinance, the buffer, the hardcore zone that exists to the east and the one lot that exists to the south are in the residential zone. This parcel is not a residential use, however. This parcel is a commercial use. We have three feet proposed along the parking area, along the south side. We have in excess of ten feet where the parking stalls are. We have a little notch that allows for easier maneuverability coming out of the last parking stalls, and that's about six feet off the line.
So pretty minor on that. That, that setback is to actual residences, I think, right?
It's to a residential use, or zone. It's to a residential user zone.
Residential user zone. Oh, okay. I thought it was just residential.
All right. So running through that, I think we've identified what the variances are. I'd like to move on a little bit to landscape plan since I think that's important to the justification of the buffer variance that we are seeking. And I think we're moving the intent of the ordinance and I can demonstrate that by reviewing what we've called now as exhibit A two, which is sheet number nine, the landscape plan with the date of May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. As you can see from the exhibit, there is an extensive amount of landscaping being proposed along the perimeter of the project. We have a series of forty-eight evergreen trees consisting of emerald green arboridie, seven to eight feet high, planting. We also have some holly trees proposed along the, the rear property lines and along the backs of the building. We have two bred maples and two honey locus proposed to provide shade along the back area of the site. There are lawn panels immediately to the rear of the building as well as a number of shrubs and plantings. There's over eighty shrubs being proposed and three hundred and eight perennials of grasses to provide for a nice streetscape. Sidewalk, you have the staircase, and then you'll have plantings along either side of those staircases, then along foundation plantings along the back of the building. Your ordinance requires that five percent of the rear parking area provide landscaping. You don't count the buffering along the perimeter, but what I did count was portions of these islands where the trees are here, these are existing trees. Those total in excess of five percent. So in my mind, I believe that's compliant. I would ask for confirmation of that if we need to introduce a landscaped island in the center here. We can do that. We can just shift that parking over slightly and create a little landscaped island there with an additional tree if we need to, to meet that standard. The, the refuse area itself, I wanted to mention currently, we're showing it as a ch, a chameling fence with slats. We're going to amend the plan to be consistent with your ordinance, to be a masonry enclosure with self-latching gate as the classified Joe is reviewing memo.
We can eliminate that design waiver.
So we would eliminate that design waiver that is put out.
Mike, there was one waiver for pole mounted fixtures being set back two feet?
Yeah, the, the one fixture here, we're, we're going to set them back to two feet so that they'll be set for proper separation. So eliminate those two design waivers that was identified. So modify the plan to be compliant with regard to that. The lighting itself, I'm going to just go over to the lighting plan. Lighting plan, sheet number eight in your plan set. The type of light that we are proposing, we call the Sun Valley Light Colonial fixture. You can see it has a decorative top, but it has the light is tucked up into the decorative portion of the light fixture so that there's no, you don't see any direct light as a result. And using the LED fixtures, you can really well control the lighting levels and where they go. And you can see from the point-to-point numbers that we provided on the plan that there's zero spillage except for some very, very minor at, and along the side property lines, it's less than a foot candle that would have any impact.
And that, that's to an existing commercial business?
Yeah, this is to the, to the commercial, the landscapers, contractors, or there that would be impacted. You can see we have two E fixtures and a three E fixture, I'm sorry, and a D fixture. And they're, the lighting levels and the lighting standards are indicated in the lighting schedule. And you can see from the description, we have what our average is at different areas, the parking lot, the ramp area, the front porch, as well as the rear porch. And you can see the lighting levels on average are all about one to one and a half foot candles. The max to min is a very good ratio, which is very, very important in developing a lighting plan so we don't have hot spots within the parking area.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sure.
On, on the, the height of each of those four poles?
Yes, it's indicated. They're, they're all set at eighteen feet, excuse me, eight foot mounting height is the C fixture. The D and E fixtures are, yes, eighteen feet.
So could you just point out on the plan where the eighteen foot fixtures are?
There's an eighteen foot fixture here, 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 and one here. So you just kind of surround the parking area with those fixtures. And they're, they're directed away from adjoining properties. So the light levels are, it's illuminating the area in front of you. This is an E fixture, E fixture, E fixture, and this is a D fixture.
And Mike, with this type of light, what kind of arc do you have in regards to down versus up? How much up lighting would there be?
You have nearly zero up. Everything is directed downward.
So like an a hundred and eighty degree for the most part down?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's known as dark sky compliant lighting.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, these are, these are state-of-the-art LED light fixtures. We've used them on a number of residential mixed use projects. They work very, very well. I believe that's all I have with regard to the site plan and the similar aspects.
I think we covered everything.
Yeah.
Or almost all of it in the resolution.
Yes, I have your engineer's review memo. We don't have any issues. We're complying with anything that you asked for in that review memo. And I believe I've addressed, let me see if I read anything and lose my memo.
I, I just found something. There's a, a provision in the ordinance limits the par, the mounting height of lighting in parking areas to fifteen feet.
So we'll, we'll have to amend that with, with fifteen.
You'll comply, okay.
Thank you, Liz, because eighteen seemed pretty high to me.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll drop, we'll drop them down to fifteen.
Okay.
And then at, at fifteen, you're comfortable with the spread of lighting?
Well, I'll have to take a look. We may, we may have to re, reposition some of them.
Sure.
And I think we have to add one more, we'll add one more. But we'll, we'll maintain those lighting levels that are testified to and we'll bring the height down to fifteen feet.
Yeah, I, there's no lights there today, right?
No.
Right? So one thing goes to my mind quickly is the piece that backs onto the resident to the southeast. Yeah, is there, can you, is there modifications that could be forced off for that piece for lighting so it doesn't project? I know it's going to project internally, I get that, but still fifteen feet is pretty high.
Well, we could look at maybe repositioning this fixture.
Could we, could you look?
That line, maybe we, maybe we have two fi, fixture here, 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 and here, and maybe one at the driveway.
In pairs opposite each other as opposed to at the end?
That would be better for the residents behind.
Encourage you to do anything to minimize impacts on any residential.
Right.
So Mike, in terms of Chris drafting a condition, you'd be willing to work with the board engineer on the final positioning of the lights with a emphasis on minimizing impacts on the neighboring residents?
That's right.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions that our board professionals have for Mike?
We lost the board.
No. I have to take a call.
We're in the middle of the hearing. I don't want to prejudice the applicant if we have a board member missing.
Okay. Take it two minute, right?
Yeah, we can take a, why don't we take a five minute break?
Okay, we're gonna, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back on the air.
Okay. You were done with your testimony?
I was.
Do you have anything to add?
Okay, are we doing the barriers?
Well, yes.
The barrier?
Email, email.
Oh, there was a concern raised by some of the board members about the grass paver area, that it be protected in some way from anybody inadvertently driving into...
We were gonna add the curb.
Right.
Would the board feel better if we eliminate?
No, 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 I like outdoor area. But because it's, there's the commercial trucking, Humphreys is opposite.
Yeah.
It could be very easy, somebody reverses and comes over the patio, over the curb, in, somebody having their Sunday off, whatever, on the patio. So we talked about boulders or something, just something aesthetic, but...
How about something landscaping wise?
How about another tree?
Yeah, how about something?
You already have two trees there.
Trees fine, boulders fine.
Yes, okay, just...
Or a shrub.
Take this tree.
And stick it in the middle.
Yeah, just a couple of things like that, just to make it, because you can understand if I'm sitting there...
Let's do that.
That's terrible. Just reposition the one tree.
Perfect.
So, final tree placement to be...
Determined by Joe.
Yeah. Made in consultation with the board planner?
Engineer.
Yeah, we'll go with the engineer. She likes to defer to me.
Yeah.
This is a professional who knows how to delegate.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna make it at the discretion of Humphreys across the street.
I've seen resolutions with eight people need to see the review.
No, no, we try to consolidate it to as much on my plate as possible.
We appreciate that.
So, we'll stick on landscaping, just the hammerhead, as we call it, at the end, where the K-turns happen.
Yeah, right, right in the middle.
There's, right, there's a nice break in the type of landscaping, and in that hammerhead area, you're proposing a shrub?
Here, well, here are the arborvitae, they're seven to eight foot high.
Yes.
There'll be about eight of them there, so that's the headlights.
Okay, so that...
People down the driveway, so they don't shine into the residential apartment.
Okay, so the species selected at the, in that corridor right there in the aisle, is specific to providing headlight blockage?
That is correct.
Okay, not dim.
And deer resistant?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Deer resistant, because some of those arborvitae's can be like candy. Yeah, thank you.
Three giant wood桩.
Thank you very much.
Evergreen, I assume.
Yeah.
Arborvitae spring.
So, just hitting the parking area, you're, again, testified that you're going to maintain it as gravel in the parking, the back parking area?
No, 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 this area could be paved.
Gotcha, so the only gravel will be the existing...
Parking spaces associated with the three family house.
Gotcha.
A three-point-o-one, that's the only area.
Gotcha, okay, I just wanted, I wasn't...
And that...
Yeah, go ahead.
That's something that through your flood hazard area permit process was endorsed by DEP and really more recommended to remain?
Correct, they wanted us to implement some green infrastructure, to grab the parking area, the grass paver patio area, the elements that DEP wanted us to incorporate into the design.
And so was a drainage plan developed there, did you review?
Yes.
Yeah, we did a stormwater manager report, we're actually reducing the impervious coverage by twenty-eight hundred square feet, so we did an analysis for two and ten-year storm, showed that there's no increase in peak runoff rates as a result of that. We have a collection system, we have two inlets in this lawn panel, so these lawn panels are gonna be slightly depressed, so they'll almost function like small rain garden, and then it's piped out to driveway area and then back down to the existing collection system on the...
And that, so that system one is entirely private?
Correct.
So then would run through our municipal street in Eastman area?
That is correct.
And then on top of that, just for the board's understanding, the, this is a minor development, not a major, our minor standard is a few inches of runoff for the increase in runoff, on a site like this where they're decreasing, right, they've already de facto met that, but what they're demonstrating in their stormwater report is that in a two- and ten-year storm condition, they're ensuring that there is no increase in any of that impact, so they've gone above and beyond our minor standard on what I would call like a hybrid minor to major standard, a mid-major standard, for those football fans out there, just to ensure that in those greater storms, and that's, that's part of, correct me if I'm wrong, reinforcing to DEP that the improvements in the flood plan are appropriate.
That's correct.
Right. So we get the benefit of stormwater management from the DEP's review, so to speak.
Great, thank you.
And that's all I had.
Yeah, good. Do you wanna move on to the architectural?
Chairman, yeah, did you want to open to the public on the engineer? Or hold it?
You had mentioned that it was a fairly brief, I would just assume, let's get through your professional testimony and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, terrific, okay.
We've been asking a lot of questions as we've been moving along.
We're gonna call Lisa Walser, our architect, for some fairly limited testimony. Lisa, you understand you're still under oath from earlier tonight?
I do.
And can you provide your professional qualifications?
I am a licensed architect in New York and New Jersey, I'm a graduate of Syracuse School of Architecture, and I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-four. And I've testified before other local boards, I haven't been before this one, but I've been to, been, I've testified before other local towns.
Okay, and you've been recognized as an expert in architecture by those boards. Chairman, I'd submit Lisa's an expert in the field of architecture.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Okay, Lisa, can you provide a brief overview, and then we'll talk about some of the issues in the review letter, if you would?
Okay, so, our proposal is for two modern but shingle-style buildings, which are newer images of each other, this style works nicely in a suburban village setting, it fits well with both residential and professional or commercial uses, there's a shingle-style building across the street, which is well-liked, and we were actually directed to take a look at it, so that's the basic style that I designed the building with. There is a shared, a shared walkway in the front, in the back, and between the properties provides a connection between the street, the buildings, the lawn areas, and the parking, we saw some of that on the site plan, that Mike had shown. The idea is to, these two buildings, like the, to gather, like the sum is greater than, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, like, it wasn't, not to look like two buildings that just happened to be the same, but to kind of work together, and the landscape, and the walkways and the landscaping, the stairs, all kind of, I think, do that. Since the buildings, as you know, are required to be raised, I provided generous steps with planted areas in between them from the street side, and we can see them over here, the base is gonna be, gonna be stone.
And what sheet are you on, and this is the, this is the plan set, if you just call out your sheet number?
I got two sheets, A1 and A2, I think, to cover, there's four plans of the first floor and the second floor, that's the building sections, and then I have the elevations.
Right, and that's the plan set, that was revised, oh, I'm sorry, not revised, dated November eleventh, twenty twenty-four?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
These are both from that, these are both pre-set.
Understood.
So in the front of the building, from the street side, we have steps that, you know, that lead up to a plaza, and that can, that can be clearly called a plaza between the two buildings, and in between the two buildings is a connecting side passageway that leads to the parking lot. From the parking lot, which would be looking at this elevation, you would, and you could see, you could see that on the floor plan that Mike had presented, there is a gentle, attractive ramp that leads from the parking to the center of these two buildings, and then you go to either building that you want. And I thought this was a particularly nice concept, because instead of having an accessible ramp, like having a stair, and then some, in someplace, and then like a prominent fancy stair, and then someplace having this big accessible ramp, this doesn't scream accessible ramp, it's just a nice gentle slow walkway that everybody could use, and it, that way there's no duplication, there's stairs in the front, that's the street, but if people are coming and they need to use a ramp, they would typically be parking in the parking lot anyway, but everybody coming from parking will have this nice ramp to walk up, and you can see on the landscape plan, there's planting along it, and there's some lighting along it, so I think that would be actually quite nice, and it kind of joins the two buildings as kind of a whole. We've removed the parts of the walkways that are right in front of the building, so there's an overhang from here, you know, lets you go up the steps in here, and the same thing, and it kind of creates this like porch-like feeling, which is very typical, it's a typical element of shingle-style buildings, it's pretty, you know, well-loved, like, you know, the porch look, it goes both with residences and, you know, with village-type of professional and commercial offices, so it has a really nice look, it creates some depth, some movements, some scale, to keep the building from looking like, just like a blind box. They're also very functional, or there are, there are nice transition space between the interior and exterior for the users, it will serve well in inclement weather, if you're ever trying to open the door, or open or close your umbrella, and all of that, it provides a nice cover, so I think that, you know, it works with the style and affects the building.
Lisa, Ms. Lahaney pointed out that we showed a metal roofing along the roof overhang, are we sticking with that, or do you think we can modify that?
Yeah, so, oh, it's gonna be that, so, to the, to give the building some more visual interest and scale, we plan to use a variety of materials on the façades, the base level is stone, and it's interspersed with some like probably faux wood trellises, they'll look like wood, but they'll be trellises, you know, nicely spaced out to break up the stone, and that's because of the flood fence and all of that, they have a functional reason, but I think they actually will help break it up and look nice, stone is always, you know, kind of a nice material to use. The walls are gonna be cement board and, I'm showing in two different patterns, so they'll be the shingle style in the middle of the game wall, it's a triangle wood piece, and then some vertical on the sides of it, so the drawing, actually, the print, it turned out, the printing is a little bit heavy-handed, but it'll be more, it'll be a little more subtle in real life, but it'll be, it's, the facade is not, the idea is not to have this be a box of the building, even though they're small, and we want to utilize, you know, the area that we have, but by breaking it up into different wood lines, and different materials, I think it gives it some scale, some interest, and it doesn't feel like it's, you know, a box, you know, that it's rather good. We are planning to use typical asphalt shingles on the upper roofs, I had proposed, as you had mentioned, metal roofing on the lower parts, and this overhang in the front, and this one in the back, I just thought it's a nice look, it's, again, it's breaking up the materials, it's not, it's kind of a typical thing, if you drive around, you'll see a lot of this mix of materials, and I think it's, it happens to be attractive, metal roofs are also good, good for like long-term maintenance, et cetera, so I don't see, I, so I understand we need to design labor to get that, I don't think it's, this is like a make or break thing, if we can get the design waiver, we probably would try for that, but we're not opposed to changing it to a standard asphalt roof and matching the upper part either, it's not, you know... It's not, you know, again, the reason was to kind of create some interest with some different but compatible materials.
Just in your view, there's an aesthetic benefit to adulation.
I personally think there's an aesthetic benefit. And we're also trying to, um, build the combination, have a roof for like to be, it's, this is a mixed-use building. It's both a residence and commercial. And we want it to look nice, but, 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 but actually look like a mixed-use building. Because you wanna, it, it, it adds, I think, as looking like, we don't want to hide the, the commercial or professional uses because that adds life to, to the street. So the metal roofing, I think, kind of goes along with that eventually. And I also thought it would, would tie into the railings. So we need railings because we're raised up with, with ground. So, um, it, I thought the railings and the metal roof might be something we coordinate and color and something like that. And the, the metal roof is not large, the other roof is much, is mostly roof. So it's like a touch.
It's a small part.
It's a small part, that's a step.
It's a technicality, the, the, I, I don't think it's a big deal.
It's fine to point it out.
Yeah. You had asked about it, so I'm just, I'm defending it, but, you know, like we're, if.
I don't think you'd want a bright red metal, you'd want a subtle toned metal.
I'm thinking, yeah, yeah, I don't think, well, personally, I probably wouldn't go for any bright red. So, um, yeah, no, and I, as I said, I think we would coordinate it probably with the railings, so the metals would be like one color. But, you know, probably a neutral color, you know.
Speaking of roofs.
Yes, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm not opposed to the metal roof, obviously we'll make sure it's a color that's aesthetically pleasing. But from a functionality perspective, when snow is on that, I'm thinking it's sliding off towards the street or towards the parking lot, the way they're both sloped. So what would you use or what would be the mitigator to ensure that the snow isn't falling down on anyone walking up the steps or coming up the ramp in the back?
I mean, I haven't gotten that far in the design, that's more of a technical detail, but, I mean, we probably would have some kind of gutters. I mean, there are, you know, ways of preventing that. As I said, it's not, and I can do some more research and make sure to prevent that in the.
I definitely want, again, I'm not opposed to the metal roof, I just know that snow and ice on that has a tendency to slide off unless you put some kind of fan blocker or something to keep that from happening, or it's heated, so it's melting off into a rated, something. I could just see that that would, for me, would be a potential problem, that would need to be addressed.
Speaking of roofs, I have a question, where, where is the access to the attic?
Oh, so I did not indicate the access to the attic. But because actually it's not gonna be a finished attic, we will have some, um, access to it. We're gonna, we're thinking of putting the HVAC equipment up there. And I'm providing some just pull-down hatches that so can be used for storage. So I am reluctant to, to show where it was gonna go.
So, so it would be through the bedroom, it would be through the, the, the residential part?
The apartment access only?
I think if it's not a problem that I have foreseen, I thought it would be nice for the apartments to have access. I mean, they, they'll have to share it with the other tenants, or maybe it gets broken up, you know, that, that, um, it'd be, I guess, up to the landlord. But, but, um, I, I think it'd be nice because it's a lot of, you know, it's a nice amount of storage space. And since this, this building will never, won't have a basement, um, I think why not use it for storage? And let the tenants, you know, use what's not taken by a landlord. So I would think that each, um, there's a utility room in each of the units, so probably a good location. You know, I'm just speaking without that much, you know, thought. But there's utility rooms that's in the center of all the apartments, that would probably be a great spot for a pull-down stair. If it fits in there, because, you know, they don't look that attractive in the ceiling, so we'll put up everything there. That's a possibility, or, you know.
What about furnace and water heater and, I don't see a chimney or anything for vents?
That's only because this is a schematic level design and.
Conceptual, okay.
Conceptual design and, you know.
Where do you anticipate it being?
The utility room. A hot water heater would be in the utility.
I mean, I think it, it could be nice, uh, well, out of maybe a high compartment, so probably it would have to be maybe some, you know, the one thing nice about the, the mirror images, you can do one on one side and one on the other side and it'll be a nice composition. So, and it could, well, and also if we do a chimney, um, depending on, you know, costs and other factors, I think it might be nice to tie it in with the stone that we're using at the base, like you, so the chimney could become an attractive feature.
There was a comment about the side walls and some fenestration.
Yes, I, um, okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm encouraging you to try to move along to the extent you can, that's the hint.
Okay, okay, I, um, yeah, so, um, you, uh, so Lisa mentioned in her review that I had shown these and I have to agree, they're, they're kind of bland, just long walls. And, um, they won't be seen in their entirety because they'll be covered quite a bit and it will be covered by, um, you know, the neighboring buildings. However, I have no problem at all with adding some windows at the upper level and it'll actually, they actually will work nicely in the apartments. Because there's, the, the center of this part is actually some hallway space in the apartments. And I think some attractive windows, um, will be very nice. And, you know, I can look into maybe some other decorative elements, you know, and I said I would, um, run them by, um, the board planner for approval.
But that's only on one building though, right?
On both buildings.
Uh, the west side.
Why both sides?
There's, so, um, yeah, so one side is, um, so this is the side from the, this is the side elevation where the, a three-bedroom house is gonna stay, because that's the street side.
Right, so be, half of that will be exposed, rest of it is.
Part of this will be exposed, that's right.
Only half of it, the back end half, and the other building goes against the commercial?
The other one goes against the commercial, it's a lower building, so you won't see the, pretty much the whole bottom of it, but, but we can.
Oh, oh, you mean it's higher than the next door neighbor building, it's the height side of it, gotcha, gotcha.
So, so you will see the upper part, you won't see the lower part.
Okay, thank you for that point.
So I, as I said, I don't have any problem with the windows and they work on the inside as well, so, so I think, you know, it's fine.
There's gonna be laundry areas, that was, uh, I mentioned in the review there.
Yeah, so, all right, so I guess I'm being pushed along, getting the, the music to get off the stage.
We want you to cover everything, but we gotta.
Okay, so I, I mean, I can move on, I can.
Briefly.
So the, I think the floor plan of the apartments worked out really nicely. There's, there, there's bedrooms that face the street and, um, the living area faces the back. So of course there's a lawn area, but, and beyond the lawn areas, the parking. So you enter into the living area, which is, which is, is nice. You enter from the living room, you go up to the kitchen, which has a nice island, so it's very clear, there's water. I think that'll be a very nice design, it has pantry. A long, there's a little bit of a long corridor, and perfectly, we're gonna add windows to that, so I think that would be very nice. It takes you, there's a bathroom, there's a laundry room off of it. So everywhere there's laundry room and beyond the laundry room is a utility room. There's a full bathroom and then at the back there is a smaller bedroom and a large primary bedroom. The primary bedroom has its own bathroom and its own walk-in closet. So, um, I think they worked out really nicely. The one thing that was a little challenging is that the, the property is long and neck, you know, or long narrow lots. So to get the two bedroom in, um, this, these bedrooms are not particularly wide. The smaller one is only nine-ten and, um, you know, and the larger, the primary bedroom is only eleven feet wide. So they're not wide bedrooms, I tried to give them a little more depth, they're not large. But there was no, looking, orienting the other way doesn't work at all. So, um, I think this is the right way to do it. And I'm only raising this because of the side yard setback. It's one of the reasons that, um, we, we need a variance on the, on the setback on the side. Otherwise, I, we would really have to, it would be very difficult to, and, to work out this apartment layout.
It's all a balance, you gotta get a reasonable layout to have a nice apartment.
Exactly.
Complying presents some difficulties, uh, with the setback.
You see them, uh, a certain width. It is long, so you want to be able to use that, but you don't want to ruin the apartment.
So, so to add another layer of a challenge, I noticed that we're talking four apartments there across. We see that there's, each has an individual entrance up the steps. Where do you perceive the egress or fire escape will be for the second floor? Because I don't see that here.
I don't think that, I didn't know that was a requirement, so they have like a hundred egress windows.
So it'll be egress windows and it's expected that they go out the windows?
Yeah, so though, these bedrooms will have egress windows.
Yeah.
Obviously you have to meet all codes.
Yeah.
So obviously it's gonna go to a fire official for, yeah?
Yeah.
So as long as it meets the fire official's codes and standards for a, a second floor apartment, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Moscow will be all over it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I have a quick question on the front elevation. I'm a little confused on, uh, your plan A dash two. If you look at the front elevation, the, in between the two structures, why does that railing not continue? I, it, is, are people going between the buildings?
Yes, people will go between the buildings, um, but.
But they won't come up to a rail, because it seems like that's a safety issue.
That was, you, that was just, that's, that's just a draft in the space, we will have a rail there.
On, on the front.
It just looks a little strange that there's not a rail.
Yeah, and I guess in my mind, I was thinking of walking through. And, you know, also, again, when you're doing schematic drawings and conceptual drawings, you keep, you change your, change. So you change things as you're going along and maybe at one point I was gonna have you also have stairs there and I eliminated that.
Right, so, so the, so you would be approaching this from the rear to get in between the buildings or up the steps? And you'd be able to go left or right?
So, yeah, so I'm assuming like the back, there's no real back in front of this building. You can see the back, the back is really just like a front. So it depends, again, like, we don't have the tenants yet, so you might just, and the apartments, you access from the back, these are the doors to the apartments. So there's four doors to the apartment, so that makes it easy. If you're, if you live there, you park in the parking lot, you walk up this very gentle, as I said, pretty ramp. You enter into whichever, you know, one, two, three or four. If you're coming to one of the shop, maybe it'll be a shop, maybe it'll be, you know, a professional office or a doctor's office. Again, if you're coming from the parking lot, you come, you come up the ramp, you go into, onto the, onto this, um, plaza and you go into one of these doors. If you're coming from the street, going on the other side, um, so, I mean, they have.
So there won't be any entrance into the retail spaces from the corridor between the buildings?
There might, again, I haven't laid out those because we don't have tenants and, you know, we know what type of.
Yeah, so, so there might be, there, there might be some entrance.
I mean, I think there potentially could be access from any of those quarters, from the front, the back.
Or, or the inner corridor.
Or maybe all of them, you know, like, they, they, I think it kind of, you know, it just depends on who's renting, you know, who rents it and, you know, if there's no rent, so I'll go ahead and design it, you know, I'll do some engineering.
I get it, you're, it's a concept, right?
It's a concept.
Yeah, thank you.
So I have just have a, for my, two, just, two design questions and one, let me do the, the last question first. Mailboxes, where would they be?
Lots of detail, huh, I don't know. But they, they could either be, I guess I, I think I'd have to see what the mail, the post office wants. There could be a central location.
For all, all tenants in retail on a central location, the front or the back, whatever?
There could be a central location, there could be a for each building, to be honest, I haven't given it that, I haven't thought about it.
Okay, just something to consider. Just a couple of design points, um, at the front, why did you go with blank glass windows there?
Here?
Yeah.
Again, it's a, just a conceptual design. If they're gonna be, I thought if they're gonna be some kind of retail use, then, then people like to see a lot of glass. It doesn't mean that they, I mean, I could have some.
Could I just encourage you to look at the building across the obu, you've got some of the design, that's, the building across the street?
Yeah, it has.
Has the sort of more of the enclave, whatever you wanna call it?
Huh?
Just, could I ask you to consider replicating that?
I can certainly consider.
It looks too, to me, it looks, it's modern.
Too, it's too modern to, okay.
For me, that's just personal. And my other design point, on the entrances at the back, right, to the, the four. I get the ones by the ramp, the ones in the middle, that's fine, those two entrances in the middle. Those two are fine, right, you come up the ramp, you go straight into your, your, your accommodation. The ones on the either side, is the only reason why you can't have a direct access there, has steps going into that? I don't know if I want to be a resident and walk in.
I don't think that would be a problem because.
You understand what I'm saying?
It was residential, their windows on their hallway will actually have bigger views. Why would, I mean, so you just walk past, you know, an attractive, it's just as if you lived on a street, you know, you know, slightly more urban area and you walk past a few stores. As long as I think this is pretty, I, I can't see, I mean, obviously that's the logical place in the building with the stairs because they don't, they don't, um, they're on, they're on the, on the outside.
Let me just clarify my question. The, the re, re, rear, the glass at the rear leads to the retail area, correct?
In the middle.
Let me just put on the plan, because I actually want to, to make sure that I'm answering your question.
Yeah. So at the rear, on the, if you go back to the other diagram, sorry.
Well, this shows it.
No, I don't care about that for now.
You want to organize.
Right, that, where your finger is, right, go there, go to the left, that glass, go to the left, that glass, right, that, right into the glass. That's all the retail.
Well, again, we don't know where the tenants are yet, so it's maybe retail, then maybe medical offices.
Whatever, it's all glass there, proposed.
Okay.
My only point is, I, personally, if I was a tenant, I want direct access, I'm making a suggestion. The doors on either end have stairs coming out of those directly down, so you're not going up the ramp and having to go past all the rest retail whatever's in, in this area here.
But that means you have to change that.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that. I get that.
You're trying to get yourself in.
Right, well, basically, things like.
Well, you can also come in from the front, I mean, this is to make.
How can you come in from the front if you're a retail, if you're residential?
Well, if you're walking at the park.
If I'm gonna get my, if I've got three feet to go up, yeah.
I take that back.
I, I, I just, it's just a suggestion.
Okay.
No, a straight shot, you're talking about a straight shot.
I, I want, I want, I just want to feel that's my path into my own accommodation. I don't have to go past the retail, that's just a suggestion. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, the, the. One step here, one step there.
I mean, we could put an access, like maybe on the side, I mean, like you're.
Centering this would be a good idea.
The ramp's here, I was just saying, steps is, steps is.
I think, what, Brad is, is, is not suggesting that's a, it's a, a planning board, you know, there's no variance. He's, he's, say, look, would you take it into consideration?
I'll take it into consideration.
That's what I'm saying.
He's offering a.
Right, professional opinion of being a DIY guy.
I, I, I understand the point.
The only drawback I would see to that would be people who are accessing the commercial from the back might be tempted to use the staircase that you.
Then put a fence, then put a little railing between the two and block it off.
But then you can't use the ramp, you can't use the ramp in the middle if you.
Yeah.
Oh, whatever, just, just have another.
You're designing it.
Have some thoughts.
Yes, can we move on with any other questions for the architect?
I have a question.
Yes, please, Tony.
Can the retail space be bifurcated? Or is it that they're oriented so that one tank?
No, they actually definitely can, that's, you know.
Windows can be here in between the two.
Had kind of shown them, they just give up the spaces.
It's actually rather inviting.
And they, and because, and the access from front, back or the side, uh, or here. They actually can be more than, you know, they can be more than.
Subject to market conditions.
Yeah.
You know, this is a.
And that way it gives, it gives flexibility to the building.
So you get some of the first.
I think the board appreciates, the tenants are gonna wanna move in pretty quickly, so this is not, you know, we're not building a target here that's four years of development, the building's gonna be, so the tenant's gonna come and they wanna move in. So it's not, you know, I think my client would love to pre-lease these a year in advance, but I don't think that's happening.
Well, that, that was my concern too with the size of the retail, thirty-two hundred each and.
I mean.
Our master plan does say that we're, we're seeing less need for retail space.
They're actually smaller than that, that way. Actually, like rounded up, they're actually a little bit smaller and includes the stair. By the way, because I showed this, I kind of read it, like, on my way here, I was thinking, I should have showed some like bathrooms and the utility stuff. This is looking like this is all retail space, but that's because.
It's an open canvas.
Because it's an, I like it as an open space for some ways to show the flexibility, but actually it's deceiving because this space will not be that big, because it's definitely gonna, we're definitely gonna have restrooms in each space and you're definitely gonna have some utility and some, you know, storage and stuff like that. So it's not gonna be this big open space, but yes, it can be divided, um, and. But yes, it can be divided into several spaces if necessary.
Maybe this is a question more for the applicant, but what if the retail doesn't work out? Is there a contingency plan to bring in residential or?
Unfortunately, due to.
Wait, sir, please. Sir, if you just.
Lou, you understand, you're still on the road, can you say your name?
Lou Ross.
And you're the principal of the LLC?
Yes.
Okay.
And Joe could testify to this, and so could Mike. Unfortunately, with the new flood rules of the state, I cannot turn these into residential. If I could, we'd be having a completely different discussion right now. But due to that, I'm stuck with commercial, either retail or.
So the residential density of the property is really driven by the flood hazard area rules because you have free and clear access requirements in and out of the unit. So while you have single families on this block that may be at a first floor elevation, it's different, they're grandfathered in from prior rules. New construction would not permit the residential's on the first floor and be habitable to get an FHA permit. So you wouldn't be able to satisfy DEP.
Regardless of how high you would raise it off the ground level?
Well, you'd have to make it higher.
You'd have to be really high.
The reason why there's two buildings instead of one, just to verify that, do that, is because you can only do two apartments per building.
I have a question.
These lots are still subdivided from God knows when. So that's why we put two buildings in so I get four apartments. Otherwise, to do this project with just two apartments, there's no income. So that's why I made mirror images, if you're wondering why.
That's fine, thank you.
My only, my only concern too is that we've had a lot of discussion about empty storefronts and the concern for empty storefronts. And we actually have in the master plan that empty, vacant storefronts exist throughout commercial areas. And now we're adding two large commercial areas. But I understand that you are, you know, you're, you have to follow the flood rules.
Pam, can I ask, like, you have a current tenant?
I have.
What's your plan, that they're gonna be a tenant in the new space?
I have a current tenant in the property to the right, it's a hair salon.
Right.
I am, I haven't negotiated anything. I'm hoping that they stay. If they're interested in taking care of one of these spaces.
Yeah.
So I think I can work that out with them.
Yeah, so you already kind of have possibly a children.
I have possibly one tenant.
One quarter of four.
Yeah, I have a quarter. They're looking for roughly what they have down, they have twelve hundred fifty square feet. And they're looking to go maybe to fifteen hundred square feet. So that would roughly be one to cover fifty, um, utility rooms in and everything else.
I have a question, and this would be towards our board engineer.
Yes.
Considerations of sewage capacity, does that matter now?
So, so it, New Jersey American Water has just lifted voluntary ban. They, they are, they will review and as in my outside agency section, they will, the applicant will submit to them for connection application and go through that coordination. But it would be my understanding that they'll be able to satisfy American Water on sewage demand based on what we're planning to build out right now.
The, the additional sanitary sewer flows projected at about eight hundred ninety gallons per day additional and water demand is only about a hundred gallons a day additional. Do you have some of this structure there?
And you've started those conversations?
Yeah.
So any other question, Mike? Did you wanna bring us on home? Did you have any?
So, Joe, this is a question for you.
Okay.
It's split, the ramp's in the back of the building.
Yes.
Right, so ADA, any of those sort of things, if they bifurcate the building between front and back, could that be an issue with the ramp location? If you have the front unit that only has, front retailer unit that only has steps going up, right?
Well, so the, so the access, you can access the front of the building from the rear.
So that, that will go all the way up?
Yes, the corridor between, so the, the ramp comes up and is ADA compliant, so it has a landing in the middle.
Yep.
For two sections to not be over a maximum run.
Yep.
With rails on both sides, brings you up to the architectural railing around the rear and the front, and then you have the corridor in the middle. So you can get in and out of any building ADA accessible, any entry point.
Would this be a time for me to bring up some historical preservation concerns?
Before we get into the planner, I suppose it might be the best time.
Okay, architectural, just from our master plan of twenty twenty-three, with design standards in relation to our historic preservation plan element under seven point three point three D, distinctive stylistic features or examples of skilled craftsmanship which characterize older structures and which may pre, often de-take, de, predate, rather, the mass production of building materials should be retained whenever possible. I understand these are older buildings. My concern is the, personally, the beautiful Art Deco work on the building that will be demolished.
One second.
I got it.
Just one of them?
I gave them to you, all four of them.
Just, just that one?
Well, I gave you four.
So, let's, we gotta make sure we're doing everything properly. So, as I understand it, this all gets brought to my attention, there's four photographs you would like to introduce and evidence, Mr. Skolnik, let me know if you.
We just wanna call it one exhibit, B one, it'll be four photos.
I think maybe two exhibits, because I think one is not of the building, it's of something else.
It's just an example.
Right, I think, I think there are four of these, no?
Three, three, three were there.
So, Mark is, again, let me know if you object, exhibit B one would be the collection of three photographs. I believe that depict the existing building, Lot One, right?
That's, uh, Lot One, correct.
These were taken by Ms. Aug.
O G E N S.
Okay, and you took those, just so we have it.
They're dated.
Yes. But you took, you took the photos.
I took.
Yeah. Taken by Ms. Augens on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay. So this will be, I can make this one thing, but I guess I'll pass this around if anybody wants to see.
Just one more quote also from the historic preservation plan element. And I think this is important to know because these are older buildings. Considerations shall be given to detrimental impact and the financial hardship on the applicant affected by the application of the historic preservation standards and promoting less expensive alternatives when undertaking an alteration, improvement, rehabilitation, restoration of structure. Obviously, the buildings are gonna be demolished. Once this Art Deco metalwork is destroyed, it's gone forever. I would like to see that preserved, either sold or archived or used within the building, but that's probably not possible, but at least somewhere in the township. This, this is Art Deco metalwork from the nineteen twenties and thirties. Once it's gone, it's gone. We'll never see it again. I want it preserved somehow and not put in a dumpster.
Okay, before we go any further, Pam, this other doc, this other photograph.
Yeah, that's just for you or whomever, just to give you an idea of, that's Art Deco metalwork.
Can you explain what this is so we can enter it as an exhibit?
Right, that's from a theater in Los Angeles. It's an example of classic Art Deco vertical metalwork with curved features.
Okay, and this is.
It's got, I've written down.
Where did you get this image from?
Internet.
Okay, from the internet.
Well, I got it from ArtDecoLA.org.
ArtDecoLA dot.
ArtDecoLA from Los Angeles dot org.
Okay, and this depicts something taken in eighteen forty-one, the Wiltern Theater?
Uh, yes, well, I don't know if that's when it was taken, but that's when the building was built.
Okay. Any objection to this one, Mr. Skolnik is B two?
Having attended concerts at the Wiltern Theater.
Wow.
I was in law school, I'm from Parsippany, but I went to law school in Los Angeles. And by coincidence, I saw somebody, a guy named Warren Zevon.
Who knows that guy?
But who was just inducted on Saturday night into Rock and Roll Hall of Fame at the Wiltern Theater circa eighty-seven. I have no objection. To that exhibit.
For the record, that's the longest yes I've ever heard.
But I've been to the Wiltern.
You're a lucky man.
My memories, given that Warren Zevon.
Someday I'll get.
For the record, that was the longest yes.
Performer. Your counsel, Sobieski, is too young to even know who Warren Zevon is.
I don't think so.
No, I have a, I have a, I have a question on this. Wouldn't the normal course be to send this kind of material to salvage? Because there's a market for this.
I, I was gonna address the question, because I kind of agree there are some really nice details out here. However, I also do appreciate in the code that, that it understands that there's financial implications and that this building would not really, you couldn't really design financially, a building that made sense financially around this. And if you saw the inside of this, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't match the facade that it does have. So I would be happy to try to incorporate it, if not, make sure I can put notes that it gets saved during demolition and those artifacts could be sold. Because I happen to agree that they're really pretty. One quick thought I had, but I can't guarantee, you know, design takes some time and it's not something you talk through, but like you have to work it out on paper. My quick thought was maybe during the, maybe through the passageway, like it might be cool to have some artifacts like historical, you know, so like as you're walking through. Because I don't, I, right now, can't see how they'd be incorporated or maybe the sponsors, I don't know. There might be a way, I, I will definitely look at it, but I appreciate that the code isn't requiring it and that if we can't find a, you know, a reasonable way that enhances the new building, then we're gonna make sure that it gets saved.
And as long as it makes architectural sense, I don't think we're trying to say now redesign around this, but your pronouncement about trying to incorporate it is.
Yeah, so I also, I agree that they're very pretty and that it's worth saving. So I, I agree with you, presented what you said, I won't get incorporating it. I'm not sure that it'll work.
It could.
If it doesn't though, we will just make sure that during demolition that the pretty parts of it are get saved and then they could be, you know, as you, whatever, so.
I'll give you my free DIY opinion.
Another opinion.
Free DIY, on the back, you see the back, on the back, the first level there, go up, where your finger is up? No, on the first, yeah, that balcony on the back, balcony in the middle, right in the middle.
Oh, this balcony?
There you go, the perfect spot for those.
Okay, well.
Beauty's in the eye of the beast.
I don't know if that's the right word.
This is a planning board, not the architect.
Professional DIY.
Sometimes they could work well together. I don't have a problem looking into it.
It'd be, it'd be great.
I don't wanna give a design answer without me studying it, because I don't.
Quite honestly, all I'm looking for is that it not be destroyed.
That's right.
And I think we wanna, and I think we wanna have our historic preservation advisory committee, Deb coordinate this.
I was just, I was just trying to look, I, I remember, I don't remember seeing this property listed on the HPA's list.
I couldn't find it.
We couldn't find it either. But I think we could still, given the, the history here, it might be at least advisable for them to document prior to demo.
Like they've done before.
Like we've done before.
They could photo archive it so that we have it preserved on.
Well, I would say that'd be a condition of approval with the board to say for that the applicant has to contact the HPA.
Okay, perfect. Can I, can I throw out a potential condition related to this? Advocate would make a good faith best effort to preserve and integrate the Art Deco portions of the existing building, Lot One, into the proposed buildings. Or if not feasible, the applicant would salvage those items and also approach the HPAC to give them an opportunity to archive, same, does that make sense?
Photo archive. Photo archive the building before demolition.
Or, or you could use it somewhere else.
It sounds fine to me.
I think the door is, is a reproduction. I don't think the door is of any historical value.
So it's probably, you're talking about these.
The metalwork.
Metalwork, exactly.
I mean, the stonework is beautiful too, but that would be too much to ask for.
Yeah, it'd be hard to save, so just the metal, these two.
The metalwork on the upper and lower, the window.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, we're going back to do some sort of wrap-up comments. You've touched on the rationale for most of the variances in the relief, but could sort of put it all together for us in a few minutes, that'd be appreciated.
Sure. As in preparation for this, obviously, you have the master plan. And I'd just like to point out, one of the visions of the master plan is to have a distinct vibrant mixed-use village centers that will feature an enticing, welcoming pedestrian realm with attractive architecture, public spaces and streetscapes, and provide for a variety of shopping, dining, entertainment and services with local characteristics. So I think that's what we've tried to achieve here. I, I think the architect has, has done a nice job in developing the plan, trying to keep in mind the context of the neighborhood and the area immediately surrounding it. And obviously, the town passing their revised ordinance, the Sterling Village ordinance, they saw the wisdom in trying to get pedestrian traffic into an area where you have some suffering retail. You have to get feet on the ground, you have to get customers there. And the best way to do that is have them live there. And, and that's the whole idea of, of what we are proposing. And that's what Lou had brought to me about two years ago now. Been about two years in the making between trying to develop a plan and getting the DEP approval. So having said that, showing that what we are trying to do is advance a major goal of the ma, of the new master plan. So the variances we are seeking, the first one is a three-foot buffer from the parking area to the adjoining property to the east. That is an existing commercial development that has existed there for many, many years. It's a solid fence along the line. And as part of the development plan, we are enhancing landscaping that you see all along that common boundary. The, the proposal is to plant the seven-foot-high arbividing all along that line so that it shields and protects that. So we meet the intent, in my mind, of providing an appropriate buffer. Similarly, along that southern line adjacent to the property owner that immediately to, to our south, the area where the parking spaces are do exceed the ten-foot setback requirement. It's only where we have the little bump out or maneuverability where we get down about six feet. And here's, again, we have the seven-foot-high arbividing that will provide for an enhanced screen and provide the appropriate separation between those properties. So in my mind, I believe that could be granted as a C two variance that the benefits outweigh the detriments, the advancement of the goals of the master plan to create a mixed-use type development with appropriate parking. You don't need a parking variance, that's important to understand. The second variance we're seeking is for lot coverage on lots one and two point oh one. Sixty-five percent is permitted. And keep in mind that when you factor in the entire property, the entire three lots are, are, we're actually complying at sixty-five percent. And that we are reducing the existing impervious coverage by over twenty-eight hundred square feet. So again, in my mind, this is a C two variance, the benefits outweighing the detriments that the advancement of the goals and objectives of the master plan are being executed. And here, and we're seeing an opportunity to reduce impervious coverage and come closer into compliance, although technically it doesn't happen exactly that way on the individual lots. The other variance that we're seeking is for building coverage, and that's on Lot One. And that's because what we're trying to do is create two buildings that are mirror images of each other, as the architect pointed out. But also, the reason that we're over on coverage, we're over by about two hundred and seventy-four square feet, well, it's the awnings and coverings that we're proposing along the back and front. And in my mind, that is certainly an aesthetic element that enhances the architecture. So in my mind, I believe that also could be granted as a C two variance where the benefits outweigh the detriments that providing an aesthetic, the appealing building would outweigh the two hundred and seventy-five square foot coverage that we have with regard to building coverage. And it's not like we're adding to square footage. It's not livable space, it's an artistic, an artistic element of the architecture. Finally, we have the three-foot side yard setback. Along the far southern side, there's no variance required here. This is a commercial use and a commercial zone, so that setback could. so that setback could be zero, we have the three-foot separation there. We have three feet and three feet on either side of the building along the common boundary between lot 2.01 and lot one, and then we have the three-foot setback to lot 3.01, and then the existing structure itself is already not compliant at 3.24. So as the architect pointed out, she had a real challenge in trying to create the appropriate size apartments on the upper level. And to be able to do that, she had to make the building as wide as reasonably possible to allow for the creation of two apartments in each building. And, and the goal is to get, as I said earlier, the pedestrian traffic onto the street so that they can frequent the retail uses and restaurants that exist along that corridor of Main Avenue. So in my mind, again, I believe that the advancement of the goals and objectives of the master plan to enhance the Sterling Village downtown area by having mixed-use developments, that that variance also could be granted without a significant detriment to the public good or the intent, purpose of the zone plan, as Mr. Stolman pointed out. It's interior to the site, they're not impacting you during the property owners as a result of the variance that we are seeking. So I, I believe we advance some of the goals of the municipal land use law by promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons in neighborhoods and the community to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential and commercial uses. I believe that we are also providing an aesthetic element with regard to the building and the beautification of the streetscape, and again, the building in my mind is, is a real enhancement to the downtown area. You have these underutilized properties that you're bringing onboard, providing for development that is approvable by the DEP, that was a huge hurdle to overcome. So again, I believe that this, these variances that we're seeking could be granted without any detriment to the public good for the intended purpose of the zone plan. With regard to several of the minor design waivers that we're asking for, with regard to lighting, the metal roof elements, again, I, I think some of those things are simply the ordinance not being ordered properly with regard to the lighting. I think the lighting is gonna be beneficial to the community and to the people that are gonna live and work there. And again, the metal roofing, I think is an aesthetic element that really enhances the architecture. And we could certainly work out the detail with regard to the snow. That's all I have.
Thank you.
That concludes for us, Chairman.
Good. Quick question, Mr. Chairman? Two things, Mr. Wanzaphoma, fence height, you guys are gonna comply with that? I know that was flagged.
Yeah, yeah, the fence would not be above sixteen.
Okay, so, potential variance, and then, design waivers, I know we briefly touched on the parking area at the beginning of your testimony, you're complying with, with that portion of the ordinance, ordinance as well?
That's the five percent landscaping in the parking area?
I think it was the dimensional standards, like the parking, like the, the dimensions of the parking spaces. I know that was flagged.
No, that, that's on, that's on lot three, 2.01. We testified that that area is sufficient to park the vehicle, we would ask for a continuation of the existing condition, that we would ask for a design waiver that we do not have to pave that or strip it, that we can just use as a scratch.
There was something in my letter about the two-foot overhang, and I think there was testimony that they're actually providing it.
We are.
Yes, so that, that may be the dimensional.
Okay, so that one.
And the nine, the nine-by-eighteen spaces are industry standard, our code is a little longer, so the overhang provides to comply with our code and provide the industry standard.
Okay, so they comply with it, they don't need the waiver for the, that's my question.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, and so you do need a waiver however for not paving, correct?
For just those three stalls on lot three.
Okay, so just gotta make sure, gotta keep score here. That's 3.01. Okay, and I'll summarize all the variances at the end for the board, so just, yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to invite now the public to ask any questions specifically on the testimony. Please come up, introduce yourself, your name and your, your address, please.
My name's Chris Conit, I live at 286 Essex Street, we're the property that is, that's the property to the south, we're to the south of, and I just have a couple of questions. The dumpster position, would it be possible to put that at the entrance of the, of the driveway only because of concerns that we have with, with insects, smells, there are rodents in the area, foxes and that type of thing? There are children, I'm just, there are children in, in both yards, our yard next door to us, and so there's a concern there.
So just to clarify, your, can you point out on the map what you're proposing?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're here, and this is our, and there's also another family here with children. So that would be, that would be a concern, and, and, you know, we can do that, we can do that.
Thank you.
And the lighting, we are concerned about lighting coming into our, our backyard, and so I don't quite understand, you talked about candles and half candles, and I'm not quite sure. We, we have, we have a light fixture proposed here, as the board pointed out, I have them too hot. So we're gonna reconfigure them, we're gonna take from here, and we're gonna place fixtures on either sides who are further away from you, and we're gonna be lower.
And direct it away, right, and direct it away from your.
The light goes down. And the other question was, would the, you love the idea of the evergreens, and just wanting to put this all the evergreen, just to. Can tint it for, for screen? Yeah, we, we have right now, we have eight of them, we have positioned from here to here, and then we have some lorripe that are proposed on either side. The lorripe get, they're like big bushes, they get very bushy, and they tend to be ever prepared. Yeah, so they can, they can get pretty large, so they'll, they'll provide a big screen. I think, you know, and, have a good comments later, so.
Okay, great, thank you, yep.
That's good.
I'm sorry, not the lorripe, skip laurels.
Skip laurels. But they're evergreen as well, yeah. Any, any other questions from the public at this time?
Any testimony?
Yeah, public comment?
Yep, I think we're now, how do you wanna move this?
You should do, yeah, public comment. Yeah, public comment now.
Yeah, so why don't you come back? You could just stay up.
Okay, sir, I do have to swear again now? Yep, okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide, if any, over the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got?
I do.
Okay, and you're still Chris Conit?
I still am.
286 Essex Street?
Yes, sir.
Could you spell your last name, could you spell your last name for me?
A-N-T.
One more time?
C-O-N-A-N-T.
Okay, gotcha, thank you, sir, please.
So I'd just like to thank Lou for cleaning up that property. It was, been a mess and an eyesore, and he's done a nice job with it, and we're very appreciative of what he's done. We look forward to the improvement, so thank you, Lou.
You can come back again, for any other time, any other.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other members of the public?
Nope.
Okay, Ken, you got something?
Uh, yeah, public has nothing else. Signage, would it be possible to have signage directing commercial users to, that there is parking around the corner on Union Avenue? Driving down Main Avenue, if you see those businesses and there's no parking available on the street, how would you know that there's a lot behind the building with an entrance off Union Avenue? I know myself, I've driven down Main Avenue, there's been no parking available, and then when I go back, just incidentally, oh, behind the consignment shop, there's parking there, I never knew that.
Yeah, we can, we can put some kind of signage out near the front of the building that indicates parking to the rear. Also, what I've never mentioned is, we are actually increasing the number of laundry parking spots as part of the zone, because we're eliminating the driving.
Right.
And the second is, would it be helpful, I imagine it would be a dumpster in this enclosed area?
Yeah.
To put a lid on that?
Oh, yeah, we definitely.
It will be litted, okay.
Okay, you good, Ken?
That's it, thank you.
Technically, Mr. Chairman, any further public questions or comments about the testimony you just said? Nope, okay, no one has anything else, I can summarize and we.
Yes, please.
You guys are good, Mrs. Goldwick?
Yes.
Nothing further, okay, fantastic. Okay, so the applicant, as I understand it, if you're getting anything wrong, please correct me, seeking minor subdivision approval and preliminary and final major site plan approval? Several of the variances, I'll start with those pertaining to lot one. Side yard setback, three feet proposed where ten is the minimum required. Next is building coverage ratio, thirty-seven-point-four percent proposed where thirty-five percent is the max permitted. Next is lot coverage ratio, sixty-nine percent proposed where sixty-five percent is the max permitted. Residential buffer, six feet proposed where ten feet is the minimum required. Moving on to proposed lot 2.01, side yard setback, three feet proposed where ten feet is required as a minimum. Lot coverage ratio, sixty-six-point-seven-six percent proposed where sixty-five percent is the max permitted. Residential buffer, three feet proposed where ten feet is the minimum required. Finally, proposed lot 3.01, three-point-two feet proposed on the residential buffer where ten feet is the minimum required. I think that's it for variances, not seeing any objections, so we'll move on. Next is the design waivers being sought, one is for the average parking area illumination, one-point-zero F, foot handles is proposed where zero-point-four is the required level there. Then the, oh, use of metal panels in the roof overhangs where aluminum siding, metal panels and mirrored glass surfaces are normally prohibited in all buildings. And then a third waiver being for the lack of paving of the parking area on lot 3.01. I think that's it as far as relief goes, if I'm getting anything wrong, please let me know. I'm not hearing any objections, I see.
I was just going to say, you said. Can you report on the metal panels? Have you probably just changed those?
Metal roofing?
Metal roofing.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I'll make sure it's reflected. And then I think you guys indicated, well, we have the architect here, you'd be complying with the, the other architectural standards referenced in Liz's memo? That's the, about the sides of the building, side elevation appearance, horizontal facade appearance and use of plank walls. You also eliminated the waiver for the pole-mounted fixtures, and you're going to have a compliant enclosure for the recycling and trash area. No fence, no fence height, the store floor areas are 3,000 square feet, right? Not 3,000?
3,000, commercial space.
Okay, gotcha, just double checking. Okay, so that's it as far as relief goes. To the conditions slash stipulations, they were numerous. I'll start with the easiest one. Agreed to comply with everything in Board Engineer Joe Bute's memo dated November 12, 2025. Let me go through my notes here to get all the other ones. One second. Okay. In no particular order, no parking on the grass paver area on Lot 2.01 for vehicles or trailers. The applicant shall install Belgium block curbing along Union to match the northern boundary of the grass paver area on Lot 2.01. Applicant will provide depressed concrete curb cuts for the gravel parking area on 3.01.
No.
Yeah, I think.
No.
Yeah, remove that one.
Okay, scratch that.
The town would do the curving.
Gotcha, okay.
Do the road improvement.
Yeah, we'll address that with our next road improvement on Union.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
So we go through it. The applicant will dim the parking area lights at 10:30 PM to 50%. The applicant will have designated parking spaces for the apartment residents. Joe's memo already. Applicant will make a good faith best effort to relocate the south recently most lighting fixture to minimize impact on adjacent neighboring properties, ultimately subject to their review and approval of the Board Engineer. Applicant shall work with the Board Engineer to relocate the tree along the northly property line to deter vehicles from entering the green paver area on 2.01. Applicant will use deer-resistant tree species. Applicant will implement measures to prevent snow from falling off of the metal roof overhangs, ultimately subject to their review and approval of the Board Engineer. Volunteer for that one too, Joe. Applicant will add windows to the upper floors and/or other decorative elements to comply with ordinance sections 152.1E and 152.1.2A and B, ultimately subject to their review and approval of the Board Planner. That's dealing with the architectural elements we just discussed a second ago. What else? I know there's more. Applicants make a good faith best effort to preserve and integrate the metal art deco portions of the existing building on Lot 1 into the proposed building, or if not feasible, to salvage them, and the applicant will also approach the HPAC to give them an opportunity to photo archive that building prior to demolition. Was a mouthful. Applicant will relocate the refuse area to the northern end of the parking lot, and the applicant will install signage along Main Avenue frontage to indicate parking in the rear of the site. And I think that's it, I'm leaving something out, please let me know.
So, from my outside agency approvals, I mentioned that any conditions of the FHA permits would be appropriate to mention in our conditions, you know, just to reflect in our conditions, the permit as opposed to referencing to my letter where it gets buried in record.
Gotcha. So reflect, I'll make sure.
Specifically because it speaks to free and clear access for the residentials and access to the building.
Okay, gotcha, okay. All right, I think that's it.
Thank you. What I'd like to do now is just do a quick lightning round with some perspectives from the board that they would like to offer. Please keep it brief, and if it's been said, you don't need to say it again. Tony, do you want to start? Do you have any comments on this application?
Nope, I'm good.
Yeah. Teresa?
No, I'm good, thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Jones? I think it's an improvement, and I appreciate the presentation by the applicant as well as the professionals, so thank you very much for bringing it to the board. Thank you.
Other than my professional DIY opinions, which adds conditions extra, no, I, I echo everything for people, I think it's a good improvement to the property and the town downtown, you're doing the right thing, so for me, thank you for bringing it forward.
No, I don't have any.
Just piggybacking on David's comment, thank you for putting up with my obsession with art deco, and I think this will be an improvement to Main Avenue.
Great, Scott?
Looks good, thank you.
Thank you again. Excellent job. Appreciate the, the presentation and the improvements, so, good. So I think we can move to a motion. Is there a motion to approve this application?
Second.
That's subject to all the conditions?
Yes.
Subject. Just got to be quick.
Who was the second? Mr.?
Scott?
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Ms. Lavater?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Laborario?
Yes.
Ms. Ojens?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Congratulations, yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Well done, good job, good job.
Good job.
Oh, yes.
Okay, we have a couple of quick items.
Let's see what happens, ready? Watch this.
Hang in there.
Yeah, it's all the same thing to me.
I don't know, when you get them out of the way. At the beginning, it's kind of nice.
I got my fun out of the way, I went to a Devils game on Monday night.
He went to what?
Devils game on, yeah.
To Rangers game.
Tonight? I mean, if they're home or not, they just won 7-3 or something.
Maybe he went to, were they playing on Monday night?
They might have been.
Monday or Tuesday.
Does he have tickets?
He, huh?
Does he have tickets or he just gets games?
His brother got tickets.
Yeah.
He went to.
Didn't take him, just gave him his ticket.
No, took, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me, we have a, we have a couple of other business items, if you could move your.
Everybody get out of the room.
Get out of the room.
We don't care where you go, but you can't stay here.
We still have work.
Thank you, yep.
It's nice to see you, Mike. Land's a phenomenon.
Okay, so we are into item on old business, and this is in connection with ordinance work. Liz, maybe you could provide a little bit of a summary and a backdrop as to where we are with the houses of worship?
Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on. Folks, we, we still have, we still have work to do, so I'm sorry, I got to put you out in the hallway.
I'm sorry, who has the photos that Pam submitted for the reference?
I think he took them.
No.
Missing, the architect had them.
Yeah.
The lawyer had it.
Lisa, did, did you, do you have the photos of the facade?
I think.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure we had a complete, we don't have copies of that, so we'll get those to you.
If not, I can reproduce them.
No, we shouldn't.
No.
Rick should bring them back. Does Rick have them?
He has them.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it was.
Great. Perfect. Yeah, give him the, yeah, perfect. Okay.
All right, okay, very, very quickly, so Chris had reviewed our draft ordinance, he took his legal eye to it, he and I met and have worked out all the issues, and so we now think we have a draft, House of Worship ordinance, that Chris, I think circulated earlier today, I'm sure, you know, people didn't have an opportunity to look at it, but if you want to take a look at it, a couple of things, just a highlight is, there is, and this is actually another recommendation in the master plan, is that we have as a conditional use, public utilities and public uses and something like that.
Institutional uses.
And it's, it's like the worst conditional use standards I've ever seen.
You could even call them conditional uses.
And so, we, as part of this, we're, we have to sort of reconfigure that just to be consistent with the Houses of Worship, but we suggest that that be a next ordinance revision, because it's just, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, this is part of the dominoes, right? When you fix one thing, you have to, then something else shows itself, and then we have to address that. So that's part of the house cleaning, and again, it's going to be the gift that never stops giving, but would that the issues that you had with the?
No, so the.
Okay, and maybe issues is not the right word, but what needed to be addressed?
In the, which one?
In the draft that we?
Oh, in the Houses of Worship. What needed to be addressed is that, just to go a macro level for a second, is right, is every town, you have these churches or Houses of Worship that have been there for decades, and they were rezoning or whatever, and they don't, you know, they're on small lots, it's all very haphazard. And so when you try to do regulations for Houses of Worship, it's a little bit of a balance between really sort of not wanting to be too onerous on existing facilities, but not wanting to, you know, it's really kind of for the future, it's really for somebody showing up. You don't want them to think, well, they have 5,000 square foot lot, why can't we, you know, in a, in a single-family residential? So that was something that Chris and I discussed, because, you know, just to make sure that he and I agreed, and we did agree, that we think there's sort of a compromise, so the minimum lot.
And we have some of that pre-existing, because we have some old places of worship that have been well established for quite some time, because we have five different hamlets here.
Right.
So that's what you see, and I think addressing those, to give the right parameters for new Houses of Worship is the right thing to do.
Right, so.
Especially when they're in the middle of a residential area, right? We don't want to shun people, but we want to make sure that it's addressed accordingly.
Right, and, and it's more for modern, modern standards, people drive, for example.
Yeah.
You know, things like that, right? People need a place to park, yeah.
This is if they're going to build a new building.
If, if somebody were to show up in town and say, or, yes, and then said, you know, we want to establish a, a House of Worship here.
So like if they were going to move into an industrial building?
Right.
Right, like this doesn't apply? This is?
No, it does. Yes, it does.
Uniformal, across all zones.
It's across all zones, but it's.
That's where I was just making sure that I understood.
Because I think what we're trying to ensure is we don't have street side parking, for instance, right?
Right.
Into the neighborhood, now that, now, while we want people to worship, we have to be respectful of the people that live there in the area, right? So that's kind of the balance that we were, that you were addressing.
Right.
Okay.
And the minimum lot size is, is, you know, one acre for, if it's a single building, and, you know, Chris pointed out, well, a few of the existing ones are not one acre, but I think we kind of got to the being on the same page, which is, that's fine that there are some here who, that are not an acre, but anybody in the future, we want them to be at least an acre.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Their existing nonconformities.
Exactly.
Kind of balance their planning argument when they come in for improvements to those properties.
Yeah, the other thing just to note, and you guys know this on the ordinance review committee, but as part of a safeguard against arlopa, the religious land use and institutionalized persons, you, you, thank you.
Yeah, just rolled right off the top.
I know, because it's jails and church, but anyway, so, but in any event, sorry, totally sidetracked.
Protections on our.
Oh, what the hell was I thinking? Oh, right, so we treat Houses of Worship the same as we treat places of assembly, which is the same as we treat schools, and that's, just so you see that in there, why are we talking about these three things all in this House of Worship ordinance? But it's, it's to, sort of, what's the right word, where you, not discriminate, not be arbitrary capricious or whatever.
Exactly, well, yeah, and if I could just piggyback off, take the burden off Liz for a second to, you know, to chime in here, so, if you guys read my memo, there's basically four points that you need to, you know, be aware of when you're drafting any kind of religious, you know, land use regulation, right? You can't substantially burden the exercise of religion, you know, I'm just really quick going to hit on, you know, everything that we're proposing here. I don't see anything, based in my opinion, that is substantially burdening the exercise of religion. For example, if you were to like, increase the minimum lot size to like 20 acres or something, like astronomically large, argument to be made, that's a substantial burden, you're not, where are you going to find a 20 acre lot? Second, you can't totally exclude religious assemblies or unreasonably limit them. Here, we're not doing that by virtue of creating an ordinance that allows them specifically. Granted, they're conditional use standards, but nevertheless, you can't discriminate between different types of religions, we're not doing that, and we're not, and this is kind of on Liz's point, which you just brought up, you can't discriminate between religious and other types of uses. Religious uses need to be treated at least as well as nonreligious uses, so by, you know, Liz's point, lumping Houses of Worship, places of worship, along with places of assembly, even public and private schools, we're holding them all to very similar standards, if not substantially similar standards, we avoid that pitfall as well. So, long and short of it, I think the way it's drafted, everything's good, it checks out, you know, I, you know, can't 100% guarantee anything, but I'm fairly confident that this would survive any kind of legal challenge, nothing in here that pops out to me that's incredibly.
And somebody can always get a variance, you know, I mean, right?
All right, so I think our homework committee will be to review this draft with that backdrop, and Liz, what do we have on the docket in our next meeting?
I just want one comment about having reviewed this.
I'm dead.
I just want one comment. Liz, we do, it looks like we're keeping in public utilities.
This is, this is what I was saying at the beginning, which is, that's a little bit more of a larger project, but it needs to be addressed, because the, the standards in there are like, if the planning board feels like it, you know?
I think it's a question of whether, we, you know, I think we'd like to make some progress on this, so I think the idea is to just take care of it just to the extent that we're going to change the House of Worship ordinance, that we're going to have to revisit the public utilities later on.
Can you just give me an example of what a public utility would be?
Well, it's a good question, I, I.
I got a good one, yeah.
Go ahead.
Natural gas regulator station.
Or pump station.
Pump station.
A transfer station, or whatever.
Yeah, like an electrical substation or something like that. Typically, it's, it's like a principal use of a property for some kind of utility purpose.
Doesn't seem real friendly for, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one thing, and this is another.
Natural, gash is a good one.
Another issue that we could bring up is, is standards with regard to, you know, we, and we've dealt with this, when the water company comes in and says, you know, you need a hot box, and there are these bright silver, like six-foot tall things, so we could provide some regulations for things like that, which is not a principal use, but it's, it's something that you should probably have some, something on the books.